The City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting for August 22nd. Could you please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight from staff?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to propose that we change the order of the agenda. I'd like to take item 9A, New Business, which is the appointment of Youth Advisory Council members. I'd like to take that first thing, right after our consent calendar. Is there any objection? Okay. Moving on, we will go to Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community. Would anyone like to make an announcement?
First of all, sorry for being late. I do have an announcement. I did get a chance to go to the family campout and to participate in that. I got more sleep than I thought I was going to get at that campout, even though I was right on Britton Avenue. But I thought, just want to say that the staff did a fantastic job. It really was well-run. I saw tons of families there who I'd never seen before. It was really great to see young families in the community. And I just hats off to the Lions, too, for doing the dinner. And just kudos to staff for the great work on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will make an announcement. I just wanted to remind the community that this week is Back to School Week for our elementary and middle schoolers, and many of our high schoolers have already started. So my message to the community is to please drive carefully and exercise caution. We have many new bike riders and kids learning new routes to school as they bike and walk to school. So please, in the next couple of weeks, leave your home a little bit earlier for work, have patience, give everyone some grace as we settle into new school routines here in San Carlos. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And taking on to your thought about the schools, I'll just say I've already received quite a bit of positive feedback about our new 15 mile an hour school zones. So I really appreciate the effort of Public Works to, I mean, we only approved that exactly two weeks ago, so quite newfound, and it's been noticed, so, thank you.
I will second those kudos to Public Works. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other further announcements, so we will move to public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not posted on the agenda may do so at this time. Please know that each speaker is limited to two minutes. We have a call-in number by Zoom, and also comments in person will go to Zoom first. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room?
There are no hands from any of our participants on Zoom, but I do have a speaker card for a member in the audience from Mark Olbert.
Hey, Mark, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell, Vice Mayor Rack, and the rest of the council for giving me this time to address you. Voters will soon be bombarded by candidate statements urging us to vote for them rather than someone else. Some of these pitches will be based on policy positions, some on values, and some on unscrupulous attacks. It's not unlawful to go negative against an opponent. While many people see it as a disservice to the community, it's done because it works. Accusations alone can tar a candidate. Most voters don't have the time to research whether an accusation is unfounded. A classic way to do this is push polling. That's a supposedly objective poll which asks leading questions to deliberately create unsubstantiated negative perceptions about an opponent. A few weeks back, just such a poll was done in the 3rd Supervisory District of the County Board of Supervisors. That's the one which includes San Carlos, where Councilwoman Palmer Lohan is facing off against Councilman Ray Mueller from Enlow Park. The poll asked questions designed to put Mueller in a bad light. No one, interestingly, has taken ownership of that poll, but it was done in precisely the same timeframe as a poll which Palmer Lohan claimed showed voters strongly preferred her over Mueller. Councilwoman Palmer Lohan, did your campaign or some group supporting you sponsor that push poll? Did you or will you use the results of that poll in your campaign? Not all voters will care about the answers to these questions I'm raising, but some of us want our electeds to uphold not just the letter of the law, but its spirit. Push polling reveals a weakness in someone's character, and character is critical when it comes to deciding who to entrust with public power. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, former Mayor Olbert. I see Councilmember Palmer Lohan's hand is raised.
Mayor McDowell, may I respond to the public comment?
I'm looking to the city manager to see what's...
I believe that would be up to you to respond, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So I just want to share that what was just shared is not true. My campaign did conduct a survey, and I issued a press release on that. It's on my website for everyone to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer Lohan. Is there any further public comment, Crystal?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. We will now move to item 6, the Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent calendar this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to, Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through K and Item L, Adopting Ordinance Number 1585, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.52 to the San Carlos Municipal Code, establishing a childcare development impact fee for new non-residential developments in the City of San Carlos. And Item M, adopting ordinance number 1586, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 9.30, Noise Control, Section 9.30.070, Exempt Activities, B, Construction Activities. And Item N, adopting ordinance number 1587, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24, Commissions by repealing Section 2.24.300 Transportation and Circulation Commission, removing references to the commission, amending Section 2.24.140, Planning Commission, Powers and Duties, and amending sections to update the Planning Commission names to the Planning and Transportation Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll now open it for discussion. I do, I'd like to kick off the discussion to just say I want to thank staff and Councilmember Palmer Lohan for serving on the Childcare Subcommittee with me. I am so thrilled, and I understand all of the hard work that went into getting our childcare impact fee crafted, and I'm really happy to see this finalized this evening. Is there any other further comments?
I just, oh, sorry. And I also want to just thank everyone for their work on the Childcare Subcommittee and for the childcare development fee. I think it's a great step forward, and after reading all this, I know why no one wants to go first.
Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins is absent. Councilmember Palmer Lohan? Oh, I'm sorry. Hi!
What happened to you?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We'll now move to our reordered part of the agenda. New Business, Item 9A, consideration of appointing four Youth Advisory Council voting members for the 2022-23 term, five YAC voting members for the 2022-2024 term, two alternate YAC members for the 2022-23 term, and recognizing four retiring YAC voting members. And tonight, we have Tyler with us.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tyler Moylan, Recreation Manager for the Parks and Rec Department. Tonight, we're looking forward to swearing in nine Youth Advisory Council voting members, as well as two alternates. Last spring, we conducted written application and oral board interview processes in order to identify and recommend these wonderful individuals here tonight. I also want to just quickly recognize Emma Lico, who is the Youth Advisory Council Leader, or Youth Coordinator here, as well as, we have a few members at large and current YAC members. When I call your name, if you could just stand in the way so they know who you are. Calista Sivay. Calista is a senior at Carlmont High School, seeking appointment of a one-year term on the YAC as a voting member. Vikram Kacholia. Vikram's a senior at Carlmont High School, seeking a second appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Sophia Call. Sophia is a sophomore at St. Francis High School, seeking a one-year term as an alternate on the YAC. Maya Neberg. Maya is a senior at Carlmont High School, seeking a one-year appointment on YAC as a voting member. Dia Patel. Dia is a junior at Sequoia High School, seeking a one-year appointment on the YAC as an alternate. Ivy Joe. Ivy's a senior at Carlmont High School, seeking a one-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Hannah Deliso. Hannah's a junior at Sequoia High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Anika Gupta. Anika's a junior at Sequoia High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Eva McClendon. Eva's an 8th grader at Tyrrell and Linda Middle School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Alora Metta. Alora's a freshman at Carlmont High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Ava Stathacopoulos. Hopefully, I said that right? Okay. Ava's a junior at St. Francis High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Before we appoint our new members tonight, I'd also like to recognize a few outgoing members. Lucas Eden, who served two two-year terms and held the offices of Chair in Public Relations. Isabella Sugden, who served two two-year terms as well and held the office of Vice Chair. Ezra Bergson-Michelson, served three two-year terms and one one-year term. And Liam Tierney, who served two one-year terms. And with that, it concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tyler. Are there any, we'll take questions first, and then we'll open up for commentary. Any questions from the council? No? Okay. How about comments? Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
I just want to thank the members of the YAC and congratulate the incoming members. I think the work that you do is fabulous. It's super creative and adds a lot of value to our community, and when I read your reports, I'm always very inspired by your work. Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I will second Councilmember Palmer Lohan's comments. Hear nothing but good things about our Youth Advisory Committee. I hear that from the community. I hear it from our Park and Rec staff, and I see it in your reports. You guys do good work, you take it seriously, and it matters, so, thank you for that. I congratulate those who served over the past year or two, and welcome the new members. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just want to thank those who are rotating off for their service on the commission, and welcome all those who are coming on board, and look forward to more great work.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to offer my congratulations to all the applicants. This is the most fun council assignment that I have. It far exceeds the rest of them. My only regret is I only get to do it, like, once a year, so... And also, thanks to Tyler, and Caitlin, and the rest of the staff that did a great job arranging and conducting the interviews. That's not an easy job, and it was, anyway, it was very enjoyable to participate in. So congratulations to you all, and we were very happy that you're going to be serving the community.
Thank you, Ron. I'm going to chime in, too. You guys can't tell, but I have a huge smile on right now. I love seeing all of you here and seeing you in person. A lot of you I've met on Zoom. In May, I had the opportunity to sit in on a few YAC meetings on Zoom to talk about Mental Health Awareness Month, and I was so impressed by all of your ideas and just your true dedication to making your city a better place. And I'm just, I'm just so impressed, and I think that, I want to thank the YAC members who are rolling off. I know that the Zen Den is an amazing legacy by many of you in our youth center, and I know that it's really popular with the kids, and I think it's just the most amazing space. So I just can't wait to see what you guys do this year, and I want to thank you for giving your time to your city and your community. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion.
The chairs? Sorry. We have public comment. I do see a hand, yes, on Zoom. I'm not sure it's for this item, but I'll go ahead and... Yep, let's take public comment. Debbie Baldacci, if you can go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Thank you. My public comment is unrelated to the current topic, but it is a request for two agenda items to be added in the future. Into the City Council, I did send a formal written request, but in the last two months, it appears that the developer at Vista del Grande has cut down over 100 trees off of the 12-acre lot next to the VIV lot at 808 Alameda de las Pulgas. This caused a considerable amount of noise with tree cutting and with mulching, and people called in and were told that there was nothing that could be done about it. So we would like to ask that the city consider amending the noise ordinance to consider large-scale tree cutting and the number of trees that can be cut at one time, for example, the number of chainsaws or mulching material. But more importantly, we request that the tree ordinance be modified to prohibit large-scale tree removal, even if the tree species are eucalyptus that do not require a permit. If they have removed over 100 or 150 trees from the steeply sloped 12-acre lot, that could have significantly destabilized the slope and placed Alameda de las Pulgas at risk for a second landslide, and that could be injurious to public safety. So thank you for considering putting these on the agenda in the future. We have drone photos and other evidence showing the tree cutting, and we also have noise level readings of the trees as they were cut down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. I'm going to ask that that issue be turned over to staff to look into, please. Thank you. Is anyone else in the public comment waiting room?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. Any further discussion on the YAC appointments? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I will move to appoint Calista Sivay, Vikram Kacholia, Maya Neberg, Ivy Zhao, as a voting member, as voting members for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023, and Hannah Delzio, Anika Gupta, Eva McClendon, Alora Metta, and Ava Stathacopoulos as voting members for two terms ending June 30th, 2024, and Sophia Call, and Dia Patel as alternate members for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023. And thank you to the city clerk for the assistance in pronunciations, so...
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll? Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
I'm very excited to see what you all will bring forward to the community, and that's a full yes.
And Mayor McDowell? Yes. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you again. You're welcome to stay, but I know it's a school night, so if you'd like to take off, that's okay, too. If I can go ahead and administer the oath for them? Oh, yes, we will administer the oath.
Stay for the oath.
Thank you. Okay, if you can all raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter? Yes. Yes, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. We can have you step up and go ahead and sign. Thank you. Councilmember Collins has one more comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to apologize to Hannah Delzio. I think I called her Delzio. I have a friend whose last name is Delzio, and I turned those two letters around, so my apologies.
She still got sworn in, so we're all good. Okay, well, thank you all once again, and congratulations on your appointments. Okay, we will now move on to item 7, Reports to Council. Tonight, we will receive an update on wildfire mitigation, and with us this evening is Dave Pucci, Deputy Fire Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Vice Mayor Rack, and councilmembers. Dave Pucci with Redwood City and San Carlos Fire Departments, and I'm here to talk to you about some recent activities in our area regarding wildfire, as well as what we're doing to make the city safe. So what we have reported previously to you, and we all see it in the news and in the activity around the state, is we have increasing fire activity throughout the state. And what we know that this is partly due to is because of the severe drought that we're in, and that it's only been getting worse over the last couple of years. There's also been a tremendous amount of tree kill, bug kill, what we call it, in several areas of the state, causing this really massive fuel load to build up over time. And it's related to climate change, and this is not something that's going to reverse or change course anytime soon, it's something that we're going to have to proactively deal with through our responsive mitigation efforts. And I wanted to point out that so far this year, surprisingly, we're at about, in the area of about 200,000 acres of fire so far this fire season throughout the state of California. And the reason why I want to point that out is because this has been the trend the last couple of years. You could see a significant uptick around '17, '18, those are the years of the North Bay fires. '19, we had a lucky year where we got some pretty good weather that was favorable to us, and then we know what happened in '20 and '21, and we don't see any change coming up to that trend anytime soon. The last time that we spoke, also, when I went back and looked at local fire history, I had to go all the way back to 1970 to find something that we could say was a local event. We have been really fortunate that we have that, the climate where we get that coastal influence, and our fuel moisters tend to stay a little bit moist, and now we've experienced the CZU fire a couple of years ago, and then most recently was the Edgewood Fire. And on this slide, you'll notice there's, it's kind of hard to see, but that red line is the perimeter of the fire, and that started and burned quite quickly. We had a couple different reported locations of the initial response. Oops, I'm sorry. Go back to the map here. We had a couple different locations that were reported, and there's a small, in the upper right corner of that picture, you'll see a small circle of red. We actually ended up having two different areas that started, which caused two different responses. We had favorable weather for us that day. It wasn't red flag or anything like that, and also, we weren't competing for resources with any other fire around the state, so we were able to get every resource that we asked for, which was four air tankers, a large air tanker, multiple helicopters, multiple fire engines from throughout the county. We had everything that we needed, and we were able to contain it to about 20 acres. And this is the kind of fire activity that we saw on that day. It was burning like we haven't really seen it burn, obviously, in this area for some time, really, if ever. This is the last 20-acre fire. We had one in Woodside on Albion several years ago, but this is, this is bigger than that one. Chief Lacks, I believe, last year, reported to you about Zone Haven, and Zone Haven was being implemented, and it was first used in the CZU fire locally, and now it's been used quite a few times throughout the state. I've been to several incidents where counties have implemented this, and this was my first time locally to actually use the Zone Haven system for evacuations. When the fire was first dispatched, I was actually in my office at our headquarters station, and instead of first going to the scene, I knew that we were going to be looking at evacuations, and I stayed in front of my computer to actually initiate the evacuations up front. So we were able to actually initiate evacuations to those residents that were closest to the fire within the first 5, 10 minutes of the event. I needed a little bit of time to figure out, based on radio reports, where it was, which direction it was going, and who needed to get out first. So we were able to do that very quickly. Great support from the Department of Emergency Management in Samatello County. We notified the residents, and we notified the sheriff's office and the Redwood City PD to actually go knocking on doors, and so that was initiated quite quickly. And that was a success story out of that particular fire. You'll notice that the two blue zones that are on here, what we did intentionally was, because of the number of people that were in those zones, we split them, trying to get the people that were closest to the fire on the road first, and then we would be able to expand that once we did that. And the roads in that area are really not dissimilar from a lot of roadways that we have here in San Carlos. And so everything that you would expect to happen did. It was crowded, we had people leaving when we were trying to get in, narrow streets, legacy infrastructure, people evacuating their large animals, things like that were happening, and we had, and we worked through it, and we had to work around it and allow people to get out. We were also able to set up a large animal evacuation shelter, as well as an evacuation center for all the residents, regardless of whether they lived in Woodside or Samatello County or Redwood City. We had one evacuation center and really worked really in close collaboration with Cow Fire, Woodside Fire, and Redwood City, and it worked quite well. So this is what is the fire severity zones, and this is a larger Bay Area view of it, and you can see the bright red areas are those areas that are most at risk based on the fuel conditions in that area. And if we zoom into San Carlos, this is our area of town, and this generally west of Alameda is what our high-fire danger area is, and that's because it's the slope, the fuel conditions, the topography, and the values at risk. When we start talking about that urban interface, we're talking about what do we potentially have to lose in there, and which, and those are some very expensive properties and a lot of risk in there with legacy infrastructure as well. And then the other concern always is, when we have a red flag day, we're always considering fuel, wind, and topography, and which way the fire is going to go. And so those are some steep canyons in there, there's some definite risk in there. And so those are some steep canyons in there, there's some definite risk in there. So what are we doing about it? We are doing, I'm sorry, I've got a slide out of order here. We are doing vegetation management. This is really one of our success stories here in San Carlos. In 2017, we applied for and received a FEMA grant through our Hazard Mitigation Program, which we've reported to you over the years, and we're able to do, or gain a grant for about a half million dollars, and really invest in those city-owned parcels to put shaded fuel brakes, to be able to reduce the ladder fuels that actually will contribute to fire spread. And we were able to implement tons of fuel mitigation over the years. It took us about three years to fully implement, and this is through a really close partnership with Public Works and the Parks Department. They've done a ton of work. This is not just a fire department project, and have been able to do a tremendous amount of work. So in 2022, we came to you six, eight months ago with awarding of a contract to Rustic Ranch to continue, because now we did, we did upfront work, and we're obligated by the grant to continue to maintain all of that work that we've invested. And we went with Rustic Ranch to maintain. But we also take opportunities to actually grow and expand the work that we've done, because we will identify a city-owned parcel, and if there's an opportunity to reduce risk, we'll go ahead and jump on that and take care of that. And Rustic Ranch has been very responsive to us. And if you have any questions for them, I know that we have a representative from Rustic Ranch online with us as well. On the statewide side, what we have seen so far this year has actually been relatively normal compared to years past. We have had two major statewide fires that really affect the state. There's been some federal fires also in the forest, and those are typically managed by federal resources. We have been to the Oak Fire in Mariposa County, and then we also went up to the McKinney Fire, which is further up north. And what I wanted to touch on that is, we send people out to help manage the fires, and the state, in turn, fully funds us back, so we pay for the overtime and backfills. So there's never a vacant fire station in San Carlos when we send resources out. We will have people come back in on overtime and actually staff the stations. And this is the current drought map, and so this is why we're not very optimistic about what the rest of the season is going to hold for us. So we are appreciating the fact that we are doing well so far this year, but we're also ready if we need to respond. And we know that we have the close partnerships in this county to respond to any local event. We, the predictive services based on this map, as well as other factors that they take into account, are predicting a busier year for the San Francisco Bay Area than we normally have. And we've been doing pretty well so far, but it's, it's still a long way to go. We are routinely seeing fires in November and December, which would have been unheard of a few years ago, and that's not something that's really uncommon anymore. And I want to back up one, let me get one slide, because I dropped one here. The other things that we're doing about working with our community and making them safer is public education. So next week, we're going to be doing a public education forum that we've done and delivered each year. I'll be doing it this year, and really having that interactive conversation with the community about what they can do to prepare themselves. We know that our residents need to take responsibility for planning, their own plan, making sure that they know what they're going to do, what they're going to grab when it's time to evacuate. I heard a lot of residents in Redwood City and Woodside say when they got that phone call or that knock on that door, they didn't have an idea of what they wanted to grab first. Do they want to grab their pets or their important documents? And we want people to think about that ahead of time. Information packets have been sent to all those that live in the high fire risk areas of town also, and that is the beginning of a planning guide for them, so they can actually start putting their plan together, as well as links to our webpages, which has more extensive planning tools for them. And then also, the fire department's always available for questions. We frequently get those. We talked about the fuel management, and right now, we're also conducting wildland urban interface inspections. So our companies are going out proactively, driving the streets in our high fire danger area, and they will look, and if they see a private property that looks like there needs to be mitigation, we will work through, primarily through education, contacting the property owner, informing them of the violation, which is a fire code violation, but ideally educating them and getting compliance through that. Typically, people want to do the right thing, and we have a great deal of success. But occasionally, there'll be some resistance, and we do have the ability to work through code enforcement to enforce the fire code. And then also, we do a lot of complaint response. And this actually has gotten quite a bit quieter over the last couple of years. We had a couple of very busy years where we had some local fires. So the amount of complaints that we are getting now are fewer, but we will send a fire prevention officer out to the site and actually deal with that property one-on-one. And just like if we found it, we deal with it just as a fire code violation. So that is ongoing right now. And that is what I have for you, and I'm available for any questions if you have.
Thank you very much, Chief Pucci. I see Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, David. That was a great presentation. I noticed that you put in that slide about the Devonshire Canyon Fire. I grew up at the end of Plymouth Avenue, which is at the very base of that canyon. And I was about to go away to college at that time, in September of 1970. I remember that fire very well. And, and the reason I bring that up is that it seems to me that that canyon is still largely open space. You know, you're just, the topography of it more or less prevents any building. So, but in addition, there's a lot more homes at the top of that hill than there were 52 years ago. And so even with all this mitigation, which I'm very grateful that, you know, you're doing, do you think that the fire danger in that canyon is any greater or lesser today than it was in 1970?
Well, I would, I would say that the fire risk has increased, just like it has with other parts of the state because of fuel moisture and other things that we're experiencing. What I can tell you about Devonshire Canyon is it's privately owned. There's a very narrow band of city-owned property that kind of goes through the base of it, so we don't have the ability to go in there and actually do mitigation efforts, except if we wanted to do it in that one small swath. What has happened is those, those homes at the top of the canyon and the different homeowners' associations, we've worked with very closely, and they've done a lot of work at the top of the hill to have those, that 100-foot of fuel break, and in many cases, they go further, and we've worked and advised with them a lot over the years. So I think they've done what they can, and they have done more than what we would enforce from a code enforcement point of view on them. They've taken the initiative to go beyond that and have done quite a good job, actually. So that would give us a chance. So if we were to get a fire that started in the canyon, we could put resources safely above it and protect those homes, as long as we get the resources that we need there quickly.
But potentially, it could be quite serious, I would assume.
It's, it's one of our primary concerns. Whenever I hear a dispatch from that area, I'm, I'm listening very closely, because that is one of those areas that I'm concerned about.
And if there was an easterly wind, it would seem to me that, say, evacuating down Club Drive or Melundy might be impacted.
It could be, for sure.
Yeah. Which brings me to a topic that I've brought up before, and that is considering building a road out to 280 from Chrisview. And we had talked about that before. And I'm wondering, has there been any more discussion or progress on that? Obviously, that would need to, there's so many agencies involved, I realize it's not an easy task, but it seems to me that it's worth pursuing. What are your thoughts on that?
My thought is that any option to our residents to get out safely is a positive thing. So in preparation for this meeting, I did reach out to quite a few other agencies, the CPUC, that owns the watershed, open space, Caltrans, which owns the, the rest area, as well as other cities around us. And I learned a couple of things, well, some of it I already knew, is our partner agencies that surround us are doing their part when it comes to fuel mitigation. And I do feel comfortable that, for example, the City of Belmont is doing similar actions through the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department that, you know, so we don't have a big hazard, we don't have a bad neighbor that is not doing what they should be doing. Everyone's really taking this very seriously. And the, the alternate route to that rest area is possible, but that would take a multi-year project of really having the assistance of the council to work on those political angles to be able to accomplish that, but it's something that is possible. Nobody said no way it would, it wouldn't happen. And then lastly, I did touch base with the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Chief about the gate, and he said that they are hopeful that we could have it expanded as well, but it really comes down to our relationship with Belmont, what communication we have with the City of Belmont, because that is firmly in their control.
Right, and, and I realize that, and I've talked to the Belmont council members, I realize that's a big issue for them, which is one of the reasons that I've wanted to focus more on the potential for a road on our side, which only involves us and all the agencies involved with building, you know, building that access out to the freeway.
And, and I can continue to research and try to find a path forward on, on how we could accomplish that with the direction of council. That's what your wishes are, and we can keep trying to find a way to make that work.
I just think that's a public safety issue more than anything. It's also, you know, when you think about the environmental issue with, with, and a traffic issue, I mean, it touches a lot of things. I realize there would be concerns, but some of the outreach I've done in the past shows that there is a fair amount of support for that. You know, the most, the people that are most against it are the most vocal. So I would, I don't know what it would take on our end to sort of push that along, but I'm happy to have that discussion.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I would appreciate your support in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Councilmember Palmer-Lohan.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the update and all the work that's being done to prevent and mitigate risk of wildfire. One of the feedbacks I heard from a community member about the evacuation with respect to the Woodside Fire, Edgewood, had to do with the fact that the Zone Haven notification came through on a cell phone, and there was also power outages. So if somebody had a phone that wasn't charged, they couldn't, you know, use an electronic, you know, notification service. So could you talk a little bit about what the redundant measures are in place from a notification perspective that are outside of the Zone Haven system?
So Zone Haven is a, is a coordination platform. It's not necessarily our notification platform. So what we, what we use Zone Haven for is for that coordination of public safety agencies. So the first layer and the fastest layer, because we have local control over it, is the SMC Alert System. When people go in there and they sign up and they say, this is where I live, here's my cell phone, this is how, this is how you notify me. We can do that very quickly, and that was done through the Department of Emergency Management with me picking up the phone and saying, here's the zones I want evacuated, go ahead and take care of it for me, because we've already had all of that pre-planned. In addition to that, there are more robust systems that are under the state control and then federal control. So if we wish to use a system called IPaaS or WIA, which is the, it's the different alert systems that will, when you get an Amber Alert on your phone, very intrusive, you really don't miss that one, we can do that. But that takes us going through the Department of Emergency Management to the state to be able to activate those systems. So each step takes more time. Really, the fastest and most personal one is when we actually send officers into the field to start knocking on doors and making announcements on their PA system. So there's not a lot we can do about if somebody is not, you know, if their phone happens to die and/or if the power goes out. Our cell towers do have energy backup on them, so the cell system should still work unless I've been on a fire where the fire started underneath the cell tower and it went out quickly, right? So that can't happen. That's why we do the, the door-to-door with law enforcement, and that's why we do the other systems, and hopefully, somebody with a cell phone, if they, for some reason, the cell phone tower was damaged closest to them, they would still get that message from another tower. So we do multiple layers, but ultimately, the one that's going to catch everybody is actually us knocking on doors, too. And, and by that point, they're probably seeing aircraft and, and hearing the fire and then, then seeing smoke. And that's why we really advise people, and we'll say it over and over again in the community meeting, is that we don't want them to wait, we want them to evacuate, because all of those steps take time to do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Pucci. Appreciate the presentation. Had a couple, first of all, I walk around Big Canyon and some of the other open space parks fairly frequently, and, I mean, it looks to me as a sort of, you know, the fuel mitigation looks fantastic. I think it's been really great work to, you know, really clean it out as well. So thank you for that. And then I'm wondering, you mentioned a little bit about sort of the other public spaces, because we do own sort of random pieces of property around the hillside, and then some that are up to Pulgas Ridge. And I'd be curious about sort of how the fuel mitigation work is done at Pulgas Ridge. And then also on those, are we, are we starting to look then at those properties that are other sort of piecemeal that are maybe just sort of open space, public areas that we have?
Yeah, and we take the same approach with each one, and, and so it's a balance between not moonscaping the area, it's about mitigating to a point that it's safe, but it's not immune from wildfire. And so any of those parcels, we have a great deal of success with goats, where they consume those light flashy fuels, which is primarily where fires will start. And then we take away the ladder fuels, which are those fuels, the low-hanging branches from the trees and the heavier fuels, that will catch fire from the grass and then carry it up into the brush and to, into trees. And so it's basically the same approach with each. And then depending on where we want to draw the line around any particular parcel, if we want a shaded fuel break, those are areas that we will actually go down a little bit deeper to where there's no grass, and we might disc it or use hand tools or heavy equipment to actually make it closer to a dirt look to really slow the spread, and that might be where we are planning to make a stand to stop a fire.
And can you touch on Pulgas Ridge a little bit? Because I, I mean, I know that's not a county that's sort of, I guess, I don't know if it's Post or who owns that. I guess Mid-Penn owns that.
Yeah, and with Mid-Penn, they, what their actions typically are, and this, this goes right along the city limits, in between us and two, city limits and 280, is they disc. That is a piece of equipment that they drag behind them that turns the, the dirt over, and it's very visible if you were to look at it from Chrisview. And so that's their approach for that area, and that's probably 20 feet wide, which is pretty wide for, for light flashy fuels.
Okay. And then just sort of one last, I want to follow up on Councilmember Collins' comment about the, sort of that big swath of private open space. You've also got county property there, and I know you talked about sort of the top-down from the homeowners' associations. I know there's also a couple large sort of individual homes that own sort of big pieces of property there, not related to the, I think, sort of on the southern end of that area. So I'd be curious about that area. And then also, sort of from the top, from the bottom up, I don't know that, sort of, do you feel like that is sort of where it needs to be as well? I know we have limited access in there, but how that's been working with those, either residents or the county around that, that area as well?
The county's, the county's been a great partner. We work closely with Cal Fire and Enforcement, and so we have different pockets throughout our city that, you know, one parcel may be a county-owned property, and we will refer that parcel to code enforcement. The, the same rule applies whether you're at the bottom of an open space or the top, it's that 100-foot of defensible space. You could hypothetically have a scenario where the winds are strong enough where it's going to be burning downhill, so those residents at the bottom of the canyon also need the same, the same protection. And the code doesn't really differentiate where you are in alignment with a canyon, the same code applies.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief. A very good overview, and it's just good to see all your proactive activities, because, you know, it is such a threat to our community. So thank you for that. The, the Edgewood Fire, I spent a lot of time in Edgewood Park, and boy, it, it sure was dry. So when I saw that fire break out, it was definitely concerning and also heartening just to see the enormous response. And I know we were, I guess, lucky that we had so many air resources that could converge, but it was just, just good to see that we were able to beat something down that quickly. Has there been any speculation or determination of cause of that fire?
So I would refer that to Cal Fire and San Mateo County Fire. That's their investigation, because it originated in their jurisdiction, and I can't comment on their investigation.
Okay. And would they, would they have an opinion if I reached out to them?
Probably not yet. They have their process that they go through, and it's really a very firm process. Once they state something as the, as a determined cause, it's, it's very defensible. So I'm not sure how much longer it's going to take, but it, once they announce that, then, then it's public.
Okay, it's safe to assume that, like, I will hear about it, most likely?
I would think, I think it would be newsworthy locally, I would.
Fair enough, got it.
If not, once, once it's not made public, I can certainly inform you.
Got it. And I don't have a full understanding. I know that was, you know, a lot of agencies involved, but I know your agency was involved as well, and, you know, any complicated operation like that, I'm sure there's a list of lessons learned. But I just had the more general question, like, what do you do as a department as far as, you know, collecting and analyzing and then institutionalizing kind of lessons learned after an event like that?
Okay, so to touch on the, on the, on the beginning part of the incident is, we very quickly knew this was going to involve the county, Redwood City, and Woodside. And at the, at the initial phases of the fire, San Carlos was not threatened, and I communicated that to the city manager and assistant city manager up front, so they can pass that information on. So our residents knew that we weren't concerned about that. If something had shifted, we would have certainly changed the, the notifications to include parts of San Carlos, but it was going the other direction. So we start off with partnering with those agencies. So we were in what is called Unified Incident Command, where Redwood City is unified with San Mateo County. San Mateo County Fire and Woodside Fire. And so you have three incident commanders working together up front and coordinating those decision points on how we're going to attack the fire. And so after that, because this was really a worthwhile event for us to look into deeply, we did an after-action review of this, where we got the, all the people leading the firefight together last, just last week, and went through it point by point and came up with what we need to look at further. And we generated an after-action report on that.
Oh, terrific. Yeah, and is that a public document? Is that something?
It's going to be in draft for a while, and we could look at what parts we want to release and what, but it generally is, once it becomes a permanent and recognized, again, this is going to be a CalFire document because they were the lead agency on it. But some lessons learned and some, really, we had more successes.
For sure.
Yeah, for sure on that. I think one of the lessons learned on this is we did have a fair amount of heat exhaustion on the firefighters that were there. And so trying to make sure that we rotate crews and things like that is going to be important, too.
Yeah, terrific. Yeah, it was a very hot day that day. Well, that's, in the Army, they were called after-action reviews as well, so I appreciate hearing that term.
Poppy and paraball from the military over the years, yeah.
Yeah, and I just know it's such a healthy process, so I'm glad you guys formalized that. And then just finally, with regard to our firefighters going out on mutual aid, I just want to acknowledge the huge effort that is. I know when you show up at one of those regional fires, I mean, that is, you know, like four hours of sleep kind of stuff for weeks. So I'm, you know, number one, I'm glad our guys and gals do that, and number two, you know, I fully support that and also recognize what great training that is that they then bring home. And, you know, it's available if we have an event like that in our town, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I don't think that there was a firefighter that was on the Edgewood Fire that hadn't been somewhere in the state on some other major incident, because we've been doing it for so long. And then we benefited from that partnership we've given for many, many years, and we received a whole lot on that day as well. And so that's the partnership throughout the state that really works well.
That's terrific. Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, John. I had the same question as John about the lessons learned, so I'm grateful that you brought that up, and I appreciate your answer and the fact that you're really taking a deep dive now to, you know, figure out the successes and where the improvements need to be. My other question was about the FEMA grant, and I'm just wondering if you can remind us how many years are left on the grant and kind of what, and it sounds like we're just in a maintenance mode with the grant, but maybe you can give a little more information.
So we are actually closed out that grant. So we, all the projects that we identified when we applied for the grant have been completed. And then we went through a closeout with FEMA, and so, you know, so we've completed the environmental review of everything that we did. We showed the extensive expenditure of money and made sure that everything was within the scope of the grant. We received most of the reimbursement. I think there might still be a little bit coming back to the city, but we have officially closed that grant out. And that really, Amy Newby did the bulk of that work. I do not want to say credit for her work on that, she did a great job. And so that is a done deal, and now we are in that period of time where we maintain. But also, we've received funding from you not to just maintain what we've done, but to also expand upon what we've done when we have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you. Do you foresee any other grants, going out for any other grants in the future, or was it really to kind of catch us up on maintenance?
It was to catch us up, and the likelihood of us to get another fuel mitigation grant is almost nil because we've already gotten it. And so FEMA would say, you said you did, this is everything you needed to do before. So we're in good shape, and it will be a while, it would have to be some other type of mitigation grant to go after next time.
Fair enough. Thank you. I don't see any further questions, and we're not taking a vote on this item, this is just a report to council. So thank you very much, Chief Pucci. Appreciate your time and all of your service.
Thank you all.
Oh, we do have public comments, sorry. There are no hands for the public.
Okay, great. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Pucci.
Okay, we will now move on to item 8A, Public Hearing, Consideration of Introducing an Ordinance Amending Ordinance 1240 for the Plan Development Zoning District for the property located at 1087 Old County Road, APN 046-184-270. And we are joined this evening by Chris Documos, Lisa Costa-Sanders, and Karen Brown, who's here remotely.
Yes.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor McDowell, Vice Mayor Rock, and fellow councilmembers. I'm Christopher Documos, I'm a senior planner with Good City Company, working on behalf of the city. Joining me, as you had noted, is Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner with Good City Company, also working on behalf of the city. And I'll be presenting the staff report tonight. As you had noted, Karen Brown is available virtually. Tonight, the applicant is requesting consideration of a minor text amendment to PD 12, Plan Development 12, to allow the partitioning of interior space. The project location is 1087 Old County Road at the northeast corner of Old County, at the intersection of Old County and Brandon, across from Home Depot. The building was approved in 1998 with a PD 12 to permit an automotive services and retail use in the building. The zoning designation is PD 12, and the land use designation is general commercial So the applicant is requesting for interior partitioning to be allowed. And I should note that Alternative 1 in the staff report does mention the request for office use, but that's erroneous and is not being considered or requested by the applicant. So the applicant is requesting the interior division of space due to Pep Boys owning the building. Pep Boys and Advance Auto Parts entered into an agreement in 2021 for Advance Auto Parts to lease the interior space of Pep Boys so that they could conduct the auto part sales while Pep Boys refocuses on automotive service and repair and they're burgeoning electric car servicing. There will be no additional square footage proposed and no exterior improvements. The signage and tenant improvements will require staff-level approval. This diagram shows how the building would be divided. The purple portion will be maintained by Pep Boys. The blue portion is maintained by Advance Auto Parts. There'll be separate entrances, both facing Old County Road. So in 1991, the East Side specific plan was adopted prohibiting retail spaces less than 25,000 feet. And this was to promote regional retail in the East Side section of the city, so it's not to compete with downtown businesses along Laurel. In 1998, PD 12 was adopted, allowing the Pep Boys building and the use. And the Planning Commission adopted a resolution prohibiting the division of space in conformance with East Side's specific plan. So the building was approved at 18,560 square feet, and the Planning Commission and city council at the time felt that that was consistent with what regional retail would be. In 2009, the East Side specific plan was retired through the adoption of the general plan, so there's no longer a minimum requirement for the size of retail spaces. On June 20/22, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution amending, recommending amending PD 12 to add the following language, "Division of space to allow multiple tenants is permitted. The use would be limited to auto repairs and sales." And this is done to just clarify and specifically state that the partitioning is permitted. The project is exempt from the provisions of CEQA through Section 15301, which allows interior or exterior alterations involving such things as interior partitions. Public notice was done through the newspaper on August 12 to 20/22. To date, staff has not received any additional comments regarding the project. With that, I move to introduce an ordinance, amending Ordinance 1240 for the Plan Development Zoning District to permit the division of interior space to allow for multiple tenants. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Great presentation. I see Councilmember Collins has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Chris. I noticed it says in the staff report that Pep Boys is concentrating on automotive repair and electric vehicle service in California. Is that something they do now?
That's correct. That is something that they do now. So if you drive along Old County, you'll notice in their parking lot, there's a number of Tesla vehicles, and that's part of their ongoing, one of their ongoing services, their contracts that they do fleet service. But in addition to that, they would also expand to, you know, taking on service and repair for other electric vehicles.
So would they have to be doing their own remodeling, retooling basically, to focus on what they're proposing to do now?
They may. Nothing's currently in the works or submitted to the city, but they are using the existing space to do the servicing of electric vehicles.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Dugan? Oh, no, sorry, Vice Mayor Beck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Christopher, for the presentation. And my question is more, Jeff, this may be for you in a more generic sense on this. So I don't have any concerns about the project and the proposal. I just had a question around the notification requirements that, and maybe this is something we should look at at some point, but I understand there's requirements on the newspaper to do that. I just find that newspapers are not what people are looking at as much these days. So, you know, are we really giving proper notice in today's world? And should we be doing more around that? You know, it's not specific to this project, just in general, whether that's something we should consider or we can do, and we may do in some cases as well. So I just sort of asked that question and sort of be curious to your thoughts on that.
Yeah, thanks. I'd be happy to talk with the staff about that. I know on many projects and issues, we do a lot of other public outreach and notice as well. Legally, we're required to do the newspaper as part of the public hearing process. You know, perhaps that will change and evolve in the not-too-distant future into some other things. We do it, and then, you know, we use the website, e-notify, all those types of tools, direct mailing and other things as well.
Thank you.
Also, in addition to the newspaper publication, notice was mailed to property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the property.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And just following on with Vice Mayor Rock's question, what newspaper do we provide notice in? Because I see Redwood City makes notice in the Daily Journal, which I tend to think of as sort of our newspaper of record. I'm always wonder why we don't put our notices there, and I've never seen a San Carlos notice in a newspaper.
We are contracted with The Examiner.
The Examiner.
They provided a bid along with Daily Journal, and they were by far a better option for us.
I see. I guess I don't see that in town, but, okay. So it was a public bid process? That's, okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. Crystal, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment?
There are no hands on Zoom and no hands in the audience.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion from council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to introduce Ordinance Number?
1588.
1588, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending Ordinance 1240 for the Plan Development Zoning District for the property located at 1087 Old County Road, APN 046-184-270.
Second.
Okay, we'll take the second from Councilmember Palmer Lohan. I don't see any hands raised for discussion, so, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 10, Agenda Setting. Items discussed in the Agenda Setting section will be considered by the council for placing on a future agenda. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Does anyone wish to request an agenda setting? Vice Mayor Rock?
Just, I know, Madam Mayor, you referred the comment from Debbie Baldacci. I just would, I would love to get a report on that or get understanding of kind of what's been happening around the trees being cut down on that property.
Okay.
We'll be happy to get you an update.
That sounds great. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any further items from council? Okay, seeing none, I would like to remind the community that August 30 is our virtual wildfire preparedness community meeting. There's lots of information on the city's website about that. And with that, I will say, take care, and we are adjourned.